Good evening. Thank you for attending our regular board meeting today, Monday, March 19th. It is 6:30 PM and I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you have electronic devices, would you please put them on silent or vibrate? We'd appreciate that. And everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Seymour, would you please call our roll this evening?
Mrs. Coon.
Present.
Mrs. Rugless, Mr. Birdy.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present.
Mrs. Miranda.
Present. Our first item on our agenda this evening is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Mr. Dave Simon's art class at the middle school had some incredible art. And I think that you guys would be very impressed with some of the selections. So is Esther here tonight? Esther is a superintendent's...pronounce your last name.
Hangzhou.
Hangzhou, alright. Esther is the superintendent's winner, and I thought that was an incredible piece.
Wow.
Okay, Esther, who did you bring with you tonight?
Mom.
Okay, Mom says she wants to get in that picture. Hold up. In your letter, always remember, the letters that you see from the superintendent's office that says, "Always be ready for photo opportunity."
I missed that one. You just said it, I think you needed to... Does it really say that? Okay.
Come prepare, I'll patch it together. The principal selection is Imani Payton. I knew that was you. This is the principal selection. You know, when I first saw this piece, it just reminded me that in our lives, there's chaos, right? So she's pulling back, showing you where all the chaos is. Now, for me, I would let the curtain go. Because nobody wants...but that's a huge...I mean, that took so much inspiration. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I thought, when I saw that piece, it was absolutely incredible. And I know your family is very, very proud of you. Okay, so get your picture. Parents, family?
Family, come on up.
Come on up.
Baby's like, "Come on, bring me."
It's a trade-off. It's good. Congratulations.
Let me see that picture again. I'm just happy that she didn't title this like, "Family." That would've been like, really weird. Antonas Lopez. That was a great piece as well. That is the Honorable Mention Award. Based on a generous donation from Ameritas, all of these...this art will be framed in very, very special frames, and they will stay in our district until your child graduates. Hint, hint. Okay, very good. So we put them on our walls, they're all over our office, they're everywhere, in the board's office, they're in different schools. So we find a different place to showcase the children's art, and I think it's incredible because having this particular event and then just showing you the art, that's nothing. We want to be able to showcase this, in some cases, for 15 years. You know, depends on if a preschooler did it.
Esther and Imani, would you please come back up? I forgot to give you your medals.
And I forgot to ask both of you girls, who inspires you with your artwork? Who's your...which parent is your inspirational parent with the artwork?
Definitely my dad. He does a lot of art.
Alright, very good. Fantastic. Mom is not...
Well, I mean, she does art too.
Alright, who inspires you?
I don't know. I usually get...my mom, she's very creative.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm happy that finally, we get some dad love, because usually, it's the moms who do all this stuff. So to get some dad love, that's good. And again, who inspires you again?
Oh, my dad.
I just want you to... Alright, fantastic, girls. Thank you. I've been hearing about this young person. So we're up to the Kiwanis Characters Key Award and for trustworthiness. I've been hearing about this young man for like, a while. Seven. Seven. Seven Blue.
I can't hear you about him. Basketball team? Superstar name, isn't it?
Okay, well, I need to talk to you about that left hand, but I'll talk to you about that. So this is what Mr. Dixon says about Seven. Seven Blue is an excellent example of how being trustworthy is a great attribute at Witten Woods Middle School. Seven has proven the highest levels of trustworthiness throughout his time at Witten Woods Middle School as a member of the several student organizations such as football, basketball, and Boys to Kings. Seven is a student leader and has been trusted by administration staff to be a school ambassador to visitors and new students alike. His teachers trust him to excel in his classes, both academically and behaviorally. He meets and exceeds these expectations regularly. He is also very proud to state he has not received a single behavior referral. All year. Fantastic. So who did you bring with you?
My dad, my mom, and my sister.
Okay, alright. So come on up with a photo.
She pulled my one out between her hands. 13 years, we totally...
Seven has like, an NCAA Final Four name, doesn't he?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Final shot by Seven Blue.
Yes, I like it.
Alright, is Eliana here tonight? Alright, she will come late. I had a conversation with her. But even if she doesn't come, I want to read a little bit about Eliana. Eliana has always been a very dedicated and determined student here at Witten Woods, and she is a March Kiwanis Student of the Month. She has a great passion for art and her education. This year, she's worked very diligently to main great grades and to apply to several colleges and universities. I know wherever Eliana chooses to attend, she will do extremely well. Eliana is also very actively involved. She's in the National Honor Society, has participated in Color Guard, and is part of the cross-country team. She also finds time to participate in programs at our temple and volunteer with students with disabilities. She truly cherishes the time she provides to others. She by far...she is by far a role model for the Witten Woods Warrior Way. Eliana, she'll be in. If she comes in, we'll just celebrate her again, okay? Alright. Alright, Ms. Van Dyke. Ms. Van Dyke is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month. And this is what Coach Dolores Crowley says about Ms. Van Dyke. Lindsay has a contagious personality. She is very friendly, smart, and loves a challenge. She is also able to adapt to different and new situations quickly. She is always in a good mood and seems to bring out the best in others. She is a good golfer and has the potential to be a great golfer. She has proven to be a loyal, cooperative, dedicated, and a team player. It is a pleasure being her coach. Girls Swim Coach Cindy Camp, Lindsay's determinations...determination helped her succeed at being our most improved swimmer. She challenged herself every practice to learn and improve her swimming skills. She is a role model and represents Witten Woods High School admirably. Very good, Ms. Van Dyke.
What's she having with her?
Alright, I moved.
Alright, second picture is Bring Your Family Down.
Did she grab the one that said she...
Isn't it amazing? We've got this incredible swim team, and we don't have a swimming pool. Ms. Van Dyke, would you like to say a few words?
Lindsay?
Yes, ma'am. Come on back up.
Oh, but you're going to say something?
Yes. All this inspirational stuff, we want to hear about some of this.
Is the smile infectious, right?
Well, I just enjoy being a part of the different team activities that our school has to offer, and even though like, neither the golf team or the swim team are very like, big and number or anything, I think it's still like, fun to get out there and have a start and maybe get some other people involved.
Absolutely. Fantastic. Mr. Evan Oatman. Yes, sir. I'm happy we're getting some guys in the game.
Happy to be in the game.
Fourth grade language arts teacher at Witten Woods Elementary School. This is just a quote, a few quotes. Mr. Oatman has a positive rapport with all of his students. His lessons are focused, his directions are clear and to the point. It is apparent that he works well with his students and his fellow colleagues. He works hard to build mutual respect with students. His students respond well to him, and his positive influence is key. I continue to be impressed by his classroom management and only his second year of teaching. He is a great team member and has a wonderful sense of humor. It is a pleasure working with him. Clearly, Mr. Oatman is deserving of this recognition. Okay, we're going to do something a little different with Mr. Oatman. Alright? So, okay. What we want you to do, it says right here, "He has a great team member and a wonderful sense of humor." We can't determine your teammanship, but we can determine your sense of humor. Tell us something, and we're going to rate you. Thumbs up means it was great, or right here means, Mr. Oatman, work on your stuff.
Just a little bit of pressure.
Alright, so, here you go. Ready? Alright, this is...let's...alright, okay, let's practice this. Folks, this means it was good. This means...okay. And we don't give any in-betweens.
Yes, we do.
Okay, Mr. Oatman?
Why did the bike fall down?
Don't tell it.
Why did the bike fall down?
It was too tired.
He is good.
I'm a good teacher, so... Thumbs up, so...
I'm holding mine, so it won't waver on me.
That's a good teacher.
Alright, that was pretty good.
That's a good teacher.
What inspires you? This is your second year, and to be nominated for your second year, I think is absolutely amazing.
Yeah, well, you know, it is only my second year teaching, and I am just so grateful to be at Witten Woods. Honestly, I feel so blessed because of all the support that I've had from everybody in my school, just the opportunities I've had, and the, you know, rapport that I've built with my students. Every day, I just love it, you know? It's been a great experience so far. And my approach is just, I try to build positive relationships with my students, and I try to teach them. So, I'm teaching them content, and I'm building positive relationships. I'm trying to build a classroom family, and implementing PBL, bringing it all together. So, I'm just loving it.
Bravo, thank you, Sharon.
Very good.
Okay, so we had the February recognitions, but a few of our members didn't show. So is there anyone here from the Stute High School Art Gallery or the Scholastic Art Competition from last month?
There we go.
Your name?
Dylan Yatso.
Come on up, Dylan.
Oh, yeah.
We've been waiting for you. So Dylan, actually, you come up and talk a little bit about your piece, and then, what I want you to do, before you do that, can you talk about that shirt that you have on?
Oh, just, the shirt?
Yes.
Okay, well...
Turn around and let people see your shirt. That means something.
Okay, well, we recently... The shirt was given today, but...
She likes it too.
It was a part of the National Honor Society organization, and...
Wow.
Yeah, it just came out today, so I just, I don't know. I just thought, it looked good, so I was like...
It does look good.
It does look good. That was a good choice.
Now, about my piece, currently, I don't believe it's here, but it was supposed to be for an art show called The Academy, The Scholastic Academy, and it was supposed to showcase different forms in media in terms of what we thought was creative, and I was skeleton, and it's currently still at the place over there, but, you know, I thought I did a great job on it.
It was a terrific job.
Do you have Mom with you?
Uh, yes.
Okay, let's bring her up for the picture.
Did you get a picture of that shirt? Alright. Our next award goes to an incredible, incredible group of people. It's the Community Spirit Award. This is the hardest award to get, alright? And we'd like to recognize an incredible group of people. It's probably just one person, but it's a big group. When you hear about who's going to receive the award, one person is coming to be recognized, but it's the Army Corps of Engineers, and we'd like to recognize Ms. Stephanie Eisen. How many of you guys have heard about this terrific rowing team, girls' rowing team? The Army Corps of Engineers were very instrumental in helping us get that waterway and making sure that we can get the boats out there and do all the essential things that we needed to do. Without the Army Corps of Engineers, this would not have happened. So another applause for them. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm Stephanie Eisen, and I'm the project manager for West Fork...we call it West Fork of Mill Creek Lake.
Yes, ma'am.
But Witten Woods Lake, and that's what most people know it as, and I know I spoke with Dave. I always mispronounce his...
Love him.
Leiden Hager, Leiden Hager. I always mispronounce his name. But ever...I've just been the manager for about a year, but I was the park ranger for 15 years. I do work. I work at Burkeville Lake and West Fork. And it's just a neat little...when Dave, Dave told us about this a little bit over a year ago, when the rowing team has this opportunity at the lake, and it's actually a little...I mean, it's just a golden little spot in the middle of Cincinnati here. I mean, not many people know, from the outside, you know, what all there is to do at the lake and all around it, and it's just amazing, and I really think that the Great Lakes of Hamilton County are amazing. I mean, they're just a really neat organization, so I'm excited about the future, and I've got about 19 years, so I hope to, you know, get to know everyone more, and thank you very much for everything.
So eventually, we'll have a regatta there, and it will be a big fanfare, where we're going to have boats and competitions from other places. We're probably the only public school in the area, or probably in the state, that has a girls' crew team. And Ivy League universities want girls' crew rollers, well, rollers. So when we find out what universities want, we get our kids ready for the university experience. And just imagine, one day, a young person's going to walk across the stage with an Ivy League experience, or to Stanford, or to Yale, or to Brown, and be a roar on a full scholarship. And this couldn't have happened without the Army Corps of Engineers kind of opening the waterway for us. So another round of applause. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Congratulations, and thank you again to everyone that's here tonight, all of our amazing students, parents, family, and community. We're going to take a quick five-minute recess. Alright, meeting is back in session, and we will move right into 5.01, the approval of minutes as presented.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. The meeting...you want me to list all the meeting dates, I guess?
You can just do that.
As presented, please.
I'll second.
Mrs. Coon?
Dr. Johnson?
You got that, Randy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and we'll move into item six. Mr. Seymour?
Our financial report, ending in the...at the end of February, we had year-to-date revenues in the general fund of $38.3 million, with our month-to-date at $11.4 million, and this was the month of our real estate settlement. So that's why we received a large portion of taxes in February, for the February settlement. Our year-to-date expenditures are at $33.1 million in the general fund, bringing us currently under budgeted right around 4% or $2 million. Our unencumbered fund balance for all funds was $81.5 million. $21 million was the general fund, $10 million in our building fund, and $46.7 in our classroom facilities fund. And that's kind of a summary of February's financials. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Seymour? Okay, seeing none, we will let the financial statements as presented for the month of February 2018 be submitted to audit. And then, Mr. Seymour, back to you for 8.01...oh no, I'm sorry, 7.01.
That's okay. For the month of February, we had $93.5 million invested, and we earned $65,088. General fund earned $30,000, and classroom facilities earned $35,000 of that total.
Any questions, or actually, we should probably go ahead and get the motion on the table, board colleagues?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments for Mr. Seymour? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and Superintendent, you have the floor for 8.01.
Yes, Madam President. I received a nice email from Ms. Coon over the weekend, and basically, she wanted a more robust report about the BLT. So what we are going to do is, we're going to combine the information from the BLT to the DLT. BLT stands for Building Leadership Team. We're going to put it into a format for the DLT, the District Leadership Team, so that the board can see the comprehensive approach of how the buildings, all the buildings feed that information in together, because these reports should have a congruent approach to each other. How do they work with each other in order to meet our district goals? Unfortunately, the DLT met today, so the reports are not complete, but we will get the reports to every board member and probably go over them at the next work session. Okay?
Thank you, Superintendent.
And I'd like to talk about a few of the events that are upcoming. Of course, we have the Night of Freedom, 5:30 to 8, National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, and this is going to be an incredible event, and I hope, make sure you get there early, because we will start right on time. Okay? This is the part, this is the next one, where I'm sure that every student and their family who's watching on Waycross, they're probably sad, because spring break is coming up, and that will be March 26th to the 30th. And one of the things that's very interesting about our young Warriors, there's a preschool open house and project exhibition night, 6:00 to 7:30 on April 12th. So please try to make that. And keep in mind, once we come back from spring break, make sure your children are well-rested, because that's when we have the MAP for Primary Grades Testing, and the MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. So keep that in mind. And remember, this next grading period on April 20th, that's when spring, that's when midterm ends. Once midterm ends, there's only five weeks of school, about five weeks of instructional strategies left. So if you're doing well at midterm, keep going. If you're not, you have to pick up the pace, and those are the upcoming events and activities happening. There is a very, very special thing happening on April 5th, the musical, Annie Junior, at the middle school. And that's April 5th and April 6th. And April 13th, and the 14th and 15th, you guys are in for a treat, because the whiz will be the high school spring musical. So we're very, very excited about that. And those are the major pieces that are happening in our district, Madam President and Board.
Great. Any questions or comments, board? Alright, we'll move on to 8.02, so back to you, Superintendent Smith.
8.02. You guys received the first reads, and I will call them out, just so that you can remember. It was the issued student email account. These were presented at the work session on March 12th. The employment of substitute educational aides, amenities for participants at meetings, college credit plus, students' electronic equipment, use of medications, drug prevention, and finances in the area of recognition, which is policy 6680. So these were the ones that you guys have already reviewed. Hopefully, you've looked at them, and we will be ready to probably vote on these at the April meeting.
If we have any questions, is it okay to ask?
Yes.
I just had a question on the district email account.
Yes, ma'am. 7540?
Yes. I just wondered, what happens when the student either graduates or leaves the district? What happens to their email account? Does it get purged, or does it...
Eliminated.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's closed out on the way?
Yes.
I was going to ask that, and then, let's see. The adoption of the, well, the college credit plus program?
Which policy?
The policy 2271.
Yes.
And it talks about methods that we provide to inform our students about this from 7th grade up. What, do you know what...
There's a college credit plus night, where you talk about the advantages of taking college credit plus courses. It's usually in the high school, and we invite the middle schoolers over to participate in the conversation, because they're eligible. So it's a comprehensive night. It's advertised through our community engagement coordinator.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, the parents are invited, that's at the same time?
Yes, because we want them to hear about the advantages of college credit plus. The sooner the better.
Good, because I think that's an important key. I just was making sure that those were in place on that.
Yes.
And, oh, I did, since I was reading these, you could tell I was reading these in-depth. The electronic equipment, it was policy 5136.01.
Yes.
And it talks about, in the first section, it talks about electronic equipment, and it defines it, I'm not sure if it includes cell phones, and it talks about students in grades kindergarten through 8th grade shall not use or possess any electronic equipment or devices on school property, or at school-sponsored activity without permission of principal. There is just a little typo, this is very insignificant for, is it principal, the classroom teacher, or other districts?
I see TH missing. Yes, ma'am.
And then, but, so does that mean that no students in kindergarten through 8th grade can possess a cellphone on campus at all?
Well, basically, the clause is a school-sponsored activity without the permission. So that's the piece. It's not saying that they can't, it's saying that it has to be something that's in conjunction with our educational process.
So if a student has it in their backpack and doesn't have it out, and it's not, it just sounds like it's not permitted on the campus at all?
No, it is, remember, one of the things that we really want kids to be able to do is communicate with their parents.
Right.
So if they have a cellphone and it's not out for any kind of use other than education, then of course, it shouldn't be.
Right.
If it's in a backpack or a locker, I mean, it has to be on campus in order for kids to transport it back and forth.
Right, that's why I was just confused with the language. It sounds as if it's not permitted at all. So it's just a little bit confusing to me, and I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll look at this through Niola and see if there's some other suggestive language for it.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Do one of them. On the, there was a drug, drug prevention, it's 5530. I'll look at the right one, 5530.
5530, yes.
It doesn't include nicotine or e-cigarettes, or I'm not sure, this talks about drug prevention, and I don't know if nicotine's not classified in this category at all, or it's not anything...
I have to get you the information, because there is a policy about e-cigarettes and nicotine and tobacco.
That's why I just went to, I looked for that, and I didn't find that in there, so I wasn't sure.
I'll look that one up.
So it has its own separate policy than that one?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alright, so since those are first reads, we will just move on to 9.01, so Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. as presented, Schedule D, supplementals, Schedule C, support staff, Schedule M, termination of classified employees, Schedule E, leaves, Schedule B, certificated employment, and Schedule A, resignations.
Board, a motion would be in order for item 9.01?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and we will move on to item 10 on our agenda, which is our Board of Education member reports. First one up is the legislative report. There are lots of pieces of legislation that have to do with education, but right now, the most important one is obviously HB 512. I did wanna report that I went up to OSBA's Legislative Conference, I can't remember if that was last week or week before, Randy, but it was one of those weeks, and it was very, very nutritional. OSBA invited all legislators to come and have a luncheon learn, with all of the members that were there, being their constituents. Very few showed up, but the ones that did show up, I appreciate them showing up and being there to answer questions, but it was, it was great. They had the chair of the Education Committee from both the House and the Senate. It got very tense in the room at some points in time to both of those chairs, but it was, it was a great meeting, and I think we were definitely heard. So, there were two emails that we just got from the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy that I just wanted to draw your attention to. One was showing you how our state Board of Education has voted on the opposition to HB 512, and then the other one that they just released right before our meeting, was talking about that there is a new substitute HB 512 bill, and that they will give us more information on this once it comes about. So, unfortunately, that piece I can't really report on for you yet, so hopefully I'll have more about that at the next meeting. We did send, for those of you that read our minutes and our notes, we did send this Board of Education's opposition to HB 512. We voted on that at our last meeting in our work session, and we have sent that to all of the legislators at the State House, as well as the State Board of Education. And we joined several, probably hundreds of other school districts in doing so, so I'm proud to say that we passed that unanimously. And that is all I have for the legislative report, and Mr. Burdy, Great Oaks report for you.
I'll pass that over to you.
Just coming, that's just a highlight of some of the things that happened at the last Great Oaks Board Meeting, which was last Wednesday night at the Diamond Oaks Campus. They were presented with the board with an award-making Great Oaks, 25 years as a Better Business Member and good standing. Attached to that are a couple of student spotlights, where we have Wynton Woods students that are in here, Heather Hag, Noah Mackey, and Espuardo Ramirez. Also, Mr. Snyder and a group of students went on a trip to Washington DC, and they picked one student from each campus, Live, Laurel, Scarlet Oaks, and Diamond Oaks, and one of the students that they picked is a Wynton Woods student that went on that trip with him, they got to meet with Shadet Portman, Brown, other representatives up there, and it was interesting that they, they said that they really felt like they all took some time and paid attention to the conversations with the students about what they were doing and how things were going in their lives with the, at Great Oaks, so it was, it seemed to be a great experience, and hopefully, I believe, next month, we may be able to get that Wynton Woods student to come to the board meeting and just give us a...
Who'll recognize him.
Three or four or five-minute conversation about what, what it meant to be there, and how it, how it was for her. My understanding is Harry Snyder made them walk about 50,000 steps in three days, maybe? I think it might have been more than that, they were not standing still very, very often, so...
I'm just surprised Mr. Snyder made it, sir.
Actually, you know, apparently, that's what he does, and he's fairly tall, and I think he has a long stride, so I'm sure everybody had a hard time keeping up with him, so, and that's my Great Oaks report.
Thank you, Mr. Burdy. Okay. We have no board motions or recommendations, so we'll just move into item number 12 on the agenda, and Dr. Johnson, we'll start with you for comments from the board.
The only three things I want to just remind everybody of the two events, the one at the middle school, Annie, and the one at the high school, the WIZ. The arts are really important, and it's important to support our kids in the arts as we do with the athletics, so, you know, just remind everybody to come out and support our students that are in the theater.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Burdy?
Uh, just a couple of things, I think, and I said this last time, construction update, there will be, there are community meetings that are coming up. You'll have one in Forest Park on April 5th at the Senior Center from 6:00 to 7:30, one at the Wynton Woods Middle School for the Green Hills, and these aren't community-specific, if you're, you know, if you have the opportunity to come to one or the other, it doesn't matter what community you live in, but April 10th will be at the Wynton Woods Middle School at 6:00 to 7:30, and on the 16th of April would be the Community Arts Center, I believe, in Springfield Township. Other than that, we had the Fine Arts Fair here at the high school on Saturday. I did not get to spend a ton of time up there, but I was up there for a little while, and the things that our students are doing are phenomenal, from paintings, charcoal drawings. One of the things that was really interesting to me is, they had pictures of students, where they took a half-picture of a student, and then they, they drew the other side of their face next to the, next to the picture, but there was ceramic models of extinct species or species that were on the verge of extinction, and it was just, it was, it was pretty impressive what our, what our students have the ability to do. And again, Night of Freedom, please, everybody get your tickets, it's, it's really easy, I could do it, I got my tickets, they came to me right away in the email, so, if you need to do it, that's, it's a good thing to do. It'll be a great, great evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burdy. Mrs. Kuhn?
I also wanted to mention the fine arts, we had a fine arts celebration last Saturday at the high school, and it was a great, impressive display of the talent, not only the media, but the visual, the vocal, the talent of musicians. So, the, the fine arts program that Wynton Woods has is deeply embedded from kindergarten through our seniors. It's a great opportunity, so we, and the point about it, too, is that within that artwork is embedded curriculum and academics, and different ways to augment the powerful learning that goes on. So, there's different ways that we try to reach out to different learners, and, and tap into their interests, and bring them into the, sponsor their curiosity, or foster their curiosity. Spring break, I want to encourage our families to enjoy their spring break, but whether it be safe, but take time out to read and do some, continue to, continue to learn. Learning just doesn't take place in the building, it takes place every day, so we can learn wherever we go, so, and come back and be prepared for the MAP testing, as Mr. Smith talked about, and rested and ready to go. And my colleagues brought up great points, so I echo their thoughts as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. As it was mentioned several times before, I just wanted to remind our community about the Night of Freedom, this is our second annual event. This showcases not only fine arts in our school district, but our new curriculum in that of project-based learning, so it's a great, great evening, and it tends to be very packed, so make sure you join us, we would greatly appreciate it. And then, also, I wanted to highlight an event that didn't make it on the, the building reports, that's happening at IS. I know parents will probably be informed, but I would encourage our community to come out as well, to see the phenomenal work that our National Elementary Honor Society is doing.
Okay.
Their induction ceremony is actually on April 26th at 6:00 PM at IS, or the Intermediate School. This is a great opportunity to come out and see our pipeline for our student that had the wonderful National Honor Society shirt on. It'd be great to see how the pipeline of our younger students progress from the National Elementary Honor Society up into the middle school and the high school levels of the NHS, so...
So, is it IS?
Yes, IS, April 26th at 6:00 PM, so that, that's specifically for the fifth grade. I'm not sure if that's gonna encompass fifth and sixth, so we could look into that, definitely. And then, obviously have a great and safe and relaxing spring break.
Yes.
Superintendent Smith, anything from you?
Yes, we missed an event, because it was in between our calendar, the Let Your Voices Be Heard, talking about violence in schools. The high school and the middle school carried off an incredible student-led event. I know Mr. Burdy and I had the pleasure of being at the middle school, as we had conversations with students, and we walked the track, just to get the full effect of it, I think it was minus 15 degrees out there, at least that's what it felt like to me, but the students stayed out there and they braved the elements, and they gave tribute and honor to another group of students that they've never met, and when people talk about Wynton Woods students, and sometimes they don't talk about them as positive as they should, but I think that people need to come and see our students in action, and you will be very, very impressed. Our students carried it off without a hitch, the 17 minutes was a great, phenomenal experience, and so, I am very, very proud of the staff and the students for organizing it, making it happen, and keeping it real about, you know, their fallen colleagues along the way.
Thank you for mentioning that, we did forget that very important event, I appreciate it. Treasurer, Seymour, anything from you, sir?
Yeah, but, thank you.
Okay. We do not have either representative from either one of our unions this evening, nor do we have an executive session need, so at this time, at the ripe hour of 7:17 PM, I would like to go ahead and close out by saying, students, you continue to amaze us, we're very, very proud of you, and thank you for having such a great and honorable event that you had for your, your walkout speak-up session, so, thank you, and have a wonderful spring break, meeting adjourned.